I will call the meeting to order. Everyone, please rise for the salute to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome, everyone. Commissioner Evans, do we have any opening comments?
I appreciate it.
Welcome, everyone. Thank you for joining us. Our meetings are neutral ground, a place to hear and be heard. Board of Commissioners is here to represent everyone in Cowan. And we strive to be sure that our decisions address the needs of all. Because we're all in this together. Just a reminder, only questions or statements regarding an agenda item will be entertained under citizens to be heard at the top of the meeting. All other matters will be recognized during public comment at the end of the meeting. War! A little more than two and a half years ago, the Board of Commissioners challenged Ingleside Golf Club to turn that beat around, gave them a year to show progress. A golf commission was formed, COVID rekindled people's interest in golf, and the rest fell into place. I am pleased to announce that for the first time in anyone's memory, I think, the golf fund is in the black. Sixty-two thousand dollars in the black. Congrats to Chris, congrats to JT, as well as all the members of the golf commission. Let's keep that ball rolling.
And all the folks at work at the golf course, they do an outstanding job.
Absolutely. Hey, a starter kit for a revitalized Lincoln Highway. That's how I like to think of LERTA. It's the toolbox to get things done and bring us up to where we can compete with neighboring municipalities. We've all been working on it for a long time. And today, we received the signed resolution back from Coatesville area school district. Woo-hoo! We are in the process of scheduling to present to the Chester County Commissioners. And once we receive their approval, let the games begin. Is that me?
That was Jane.
Oh, okay.
She's chiming in.
These troubling times. Last week, five high school football players were shot after a scrimmage in broad daylight outside of Philadelphia. In broad daylight, and there were bystanders all around. One of them died. This week, someone shot up a car in the Wedgewood parking lot, right here in Cowan. The two intended victims were not hit and managed to escape. But let's get something straight. This is the fourth time in less than four months I've been up here reporting a shooting in Cowan Township. I'm fed up, and I hope you are too. We have one of the finest police departments in the state, if not the finest. But when too many people have access to guns, there's not much that can be done. I'm not going to ask for thoughts and prayers, I'm going to ask for action. We can all do our part to cool things down, just in the way we live our lives and the way we treat each other. Let's be kind to each other. Let's be grateful that we've survived a once-in-a-century pandemic with our lives. Let's give peace and love a chance. Cleanup time. They're giving some peace and love. Kudos to the social media groups that have been keeping it real out there. Social media can be a wonderful way to stay in touch with friends, but it's not always the place to give factual information. If you want solid answers to your concerns, you don't need to scour the web, just shoot one of us an email. It will, uh, we'll get back to you. Your question will not only be answered, but it will be also be anonymously addressed as part of the open commentary at the next meeting. And lastly, Cowan Township is open for business. Nothing is ever perfect, but it's our township, our community, our home. Hashtag, hashtag, look out for Cowan. We can all be a part of the solution by eagerly spreading the good news about where we live.
Thank you, Commissioner Evans. All right, next on our agenda, we have a presentation. Mr. Fuller? This is for the Keystone Lighting Solution.
Press the gray button until we see the gray, the red number. It's on. Great. While Kristen's bringing that up. So, Mike Fuller with Keystone Lighting Solutions, we're here to talk about the Regional Streetlight Procurement Program. We talked about this at the beginning of the summer, kind of initiating the first step of that, which was to actually buy back your fixtures from PICO, because you need to own them before you can actually upgrade them. And so, I'm back tonight to talk to you about the project that's been put together. We have all the specifications for it at this point. And so, your decision tonight is whether you want to move on with the project, move into the construction phase, and so, you can take action on that. And then, the only things that you would have to decide, other than if you want to move forward, is there are some control options I'm going to cover for you tonight. And, uh, and then also, there is a, we don't typically have this, but in your case, we also have an adder that was requested by the township for lights that you don't own, but you do have to maintain. And so, we have that as an added option to upgrade those to LED, which would reduce your maintenance costs. Everything else would reduce maintenance and energy costs, because you actually own them and pay for the electricity. So, with that being said, we can go on to, actually, we can skip up to slide four, Kristen. So, the reason that, uh, that you want to look at this, and all many other municipalities have looked at this and are doing it, upgrading your LED streetlights is basically you're going to save 50 to 75% on your energy costs associated with those streetlights by going from older technology to LED technology. And by the way, LED technology is the standard technology. You just happen to have an older installed base of older technology. And then, you're also going to reduce your maintenance costs because of the much longer life characteristics of the LED lighting. Those economic aspects of the project are all factored into the savings that we show you in the financials. But you also do get better performance in terms of these are more controllable. When we talk about controls, we actually can dim the lights and adjust the lights. You can get real-time monitoring from the lights if you choose to do that. Those are things that you really couldn't do with the older technology also. So, we can go on to the next slide. One thing that's very important, this is a, you know, it's a good-sized project. When we look at the numbers, this is something, if you did this on your own, you'd have to go out and get bids and do all the procurement yourself. This is part of DVRPC's program. They've done all the procurement for you. As a matter of fact, we've did this several years ago for the second round of the program, and we've extended it for the third round, which you're part of. And via Chapter 19 of the Pennsylvania Procurement Act, you're, you're covered. You don't have to do any of the procurement. You're just piggybacking off of what DVRPC has already done to, and that's for all the materials, the installation, the distribution of materials, that's all covered, as well as my, uh, my fees and the services that I have provided to you so far and will continue to provide to you. That was all competitively, you know, bid and selected by DVRPC. So, we can go on to the next slide. So, DVRPC did set this up as a turnkey program. They understand that many municipalities don't have the technical staff to maybe run this or develop this type of project on their own, and, uh, in many other aspects. So, we've done everything. We put together the feasibility study for you, which was free to you. That was what we called Phase One. The procurement's been done. We provide all the technical assistance. We brought in the auditors to actually locate every fixture, because PICO doesn't have a perfect view of where everything is in the municipality. And this is a GIS-based audit that we completed, which, by the way, that's all data that you get as part of this project. And, uh, so, we've put all that together for you. And there have been, uh, we're now over 60 municipalities that have already implemented this project in Rounds One and Round Two, and they're getting significant savings, as you can see. Not only financial savings, you can see Round One had $15.3 million in net savings after their project was paid for over 20 years. And Round One, they're probably like three or four years into those savings at this point. But it's also a very green and sustainable project, because reducing energy consumption, you're reducing greenhouse gas, and, uh, so that helps with your carbon footprint. So, we can go on to the next slide. And the next one. So, this is where we stand in the, the process. Kristen, can we go on to the next, or go back one? Sorry. To the, kind of, with the other way. The one with the, uh, the kind of bar chart, yeah, there we go. So, uh, this is where we stand right now. I already mentioned feasibility was conducted for you. We were at the end of the project development phase, which is really the audit and design phase. And so, with the resolution, if you took action on that and moved forward, you'd go on to the construction phase. And with that comes the post-construction phase, where we document everything. My firm, KLS, stays on as the project manager, and then we use our program-selected installer, Armor &amp; Sons. They would be, actually be doing the installation, and you would have a construction contract with them directly for material labor installation. We can go on to the next slide. And the next one. So, we did prepare more detailed, excuse me, project specification. This presentation I'm giving tonight is a summary of that document. We can go on to the next slide. So, this is what's in your project. You have 182 of these kind of utilitarian streetlights. We call them Cobra Heads. And, uh, basically, they're varying wattages right now. And we're going to replace all but one of those with LED technology. And we have designed the system that you have different levels of light on different types of roadways. So, local residential roads have less light, the major roads have the most light, and collectors are in between. And this is a design that's worked for all those 60 municipalities very well. So, uh, we did all the design upfront to make sure that it was appropriate. But now, we have 60 municipalities of experience that everything we thought would be the right design is the right design. The one that we are not upgrading, we're going to remove, because it's a, it was an older streetlight, it was turned the wrong way, it's now over a private property that has its own lighting. So, we're going to get rid of that one for you, and we'll take it away. Uh, we can go on to the next slide. You have 62 of these decorative fixtures. We call them four-sided colonials. These are in residential areas. And, uh, like the Cobra Heads, where we take the whole head off and replace it with a new fixture, we do the same with these. We take that, uh, the old head off, put on the new fixture, the pole stays. And, uh, of course, if we see any wiring in either of these instances that you can't see during the audit, we do have contingency in the project to be careful rewiring to make sure that it's all safe. We can go on to the next slide. You also have two shoeboxes. So, we're going to upgrade those also. They'll look very similar to what they look like now. The picture I have is gray, but it actually would be a dark bronze, so it would look just like the pole does there. And then, this is the add option that we discussed. So, again, these are decoratives that you don't own, but you are responsible for maintaining them, or you have been maintaining those. So, to reduce maintenance costs, we could retrofit these. So, this isn't generating energy savings for you, or cost savings for you, but it will reduce maintenance costs. So, I'll show you the price tag on that, and that'll be part of your decision. So, the next option that we want to talk about are controls. We basically, the basic base project assumes that we just put a photocell on the new fixtures, and that's going to turn lights on and off at dusk and dawn, like they are operated now. We can also put in a manual control, which is kind of a dimmer inside of the fixture. And we do that simply for the purpose to have a little insurance that in the future, if you want to increase or decrease light levels, you have that capability to do that. So, it's a kind of a low-cost way to have that, uh, that good sense that you can adjust things. If you have an intersection that you feel is unsafe and you want to increase light levels, you'd be able to do that. If you have an area where you think the light's obtrusive for some reason, you could, you know, take that down if you needed to. The other option is a network control system. With the manual controls, you still have the photocell on top, so that device is inside the fixture. And we set it where we want it at time of installation, so we, but you would be able to change it in the future if you wanted to. But you'd have to go to the fixture, hence the manual, you know, name in there. The other option is to have a network control system. And the network control system is basically, we take off the photocell, put on this node, and that node will, um, basically be part of a network that communicates up through the cloud, and you can access a cloud-based interface. And that allows you to see all of your fixtures, they're all connected. And the primary reason that people like to do this is not so they can play with dimming or something like that. I mean, we've designed a, a good system for your streets, so we suggest you keep that like that and keep it standardized. The key reason is, is this will proactively tell you when lights are out. If they get hit, they have a tilt sensor in them, they actually will tell you that they have been knocked over. If they're on during the day, uh, which is another common thing that can occur, it will tell you that. So, you can get reports from the system. So, you don't have to wait till a resident calls you to tell you that there's an issue there, or for somebody else to see it, the system will tell you that. So, there are also some savings associated with that. PICO has a different tariff that they can put you on that is a little more cost-effective than the one you'll be going on to after the buyback is complete.
Excuse me, the network control system that you're speaking of, uh, I guess, how much more money is that compared to the manual?
I'll show you that option.
Okay. And you're talking about, I guess there's a discount that PICO would give us as well?
Yeah, and, uh, so, when I get to the financials, I'll show you the energy savings of the different options. And you'll see the energy savings are slightly higher with the network control system, but there is a higher project cost associated with it.
And with the network system, is that controlled from here at the office?
Yeah, there's not a lot of proactive control from it. You don't have any hardware here in the office, it's all cloud-based. So, these actually communicate, that node will communicate cellularly to the cloud, and then the, uh, main system is in, in the cloud also. It's hosted on the manufacturer's server. And, uh, but you have a, like a-
I'm sorry, what?
Kind of like an app.
Okay. All right.
Yep. And then, you're in, you can access it from a tablet, a phone. The screen's a little small on a phone, but a tablet or laptop computer, you can, it's all through the web.
Directly to race.
I was trying to ask, but would you be able to set it up so it would send alerts, one of those features to whoever we set that up?
Yeah, it has both alarms, which are things that can be sent out immediately. You guys are pointing at each other, who's going to get the alarm? And yeah, it will email, uh, like if there's a, a tilt registered, then it can send out an alarm. Yep. So, the other things, we have reports. I mean, there's some things that are not critical to know immediately. So, most people have daily reports of like dayburners and outages and things like that, but tilts, people like to know right away, because it may be associated with an accident. So, we can go on to the next slide. So, we already talked about the buyback. You're, this has been submitted to the PUC. So, based on the timing, we've been seeing, probably in the next month or so, they're going to come back and say, you now own the lights. And even with that, you're going to get a significant cost savings, even before the project is done, just because the tariff is so much lower. But then, adding the LEDs on top of it is just going to maximize your, your savings. So, we don't need to go through this slide, we had a whole separate meeting on this. Here's a summary of the financials. So, the base upgrade, again, that's just with the basic photocell on top. The annual operating cost savings are about $31,000. And, and by the way, these, these financials show all the benefits of the buyback plus the LED upgrade, because they both give financial benefits. So, this factors that all in. So, you have almost $32,000 in annual operating cost savings. So, that's energy cost reduction and maintenance cost reductions. And the total net project cost, so this is after you get your PICO rebate, would be $97,000. That's based on all of our negotiated prices that we have already put into place. And the payback period is three years for that. If you do the base upgrade plus the manual control option, savings are about exactly the same, because we set it to the same, you know, light output and wattage consumption. And then, the total cost, they go up to $106,000. That's a 3.4-year payback. If you do the network controls, uh, that your savings, as I mentioned, go up to $34,000 per year, but you have to pay more for that network control system. That's $175,000. But I will say that that project cost that I show for the network controls, you know, it has the 20 years of license fees, it has 20 years of cellular costs. So, there's no, like, you probably won't pay all that upfront, you know, some of it is baked in over 20 years, like cellular fees. But we capture it all, just so you know what the total cost would be over a 20-year period.
Just so the board is aware, and it's completely to the board's discretion, staff would like to go with the base upgrade and network control options, even though it's more costly for another year and a half of payments. The difference there is one workman's comp claim of sending somebody out to do maintenance, one property and liability claim that a light's out and we didn't get that report, and somebody files against the township. I mean, it, it, in staff time, you know, currently, how, how it's done, as we all know, and it's not the most effective way, is when a light's out, you know, our admin staff isn't around at night, we wait until a resident calls, and then a resident has to go and get the number off the pole and has to call us, and then we call PICO. This takes that all the way, that now, when a light is out, there's a direct email sent, and we can have it taken care of. It also gives us the ability, you know, when timing changes come and seasons change, you know, to dim or undim a light according to the need of the community at that point. It, it's so much of a, a difference in our ability to control and really give a good product for the community that has the lighting. So, so the difference of a year and a half in cost is well worth putting into for the length of the project. But again, it's completely to the, you know, discretion of the board. The staff is just happy to have this upgrade, and we will work with whatever, you know, whatever decision you guys want us to work within.
Ms. Denny? I did have a question, and I know you and I have already talked about it, but, uh, having outlets on some of the streetlights, is this part of this, or is this something different?
That's a different, Abby has been working on that, actually. I mean, we, we have that ability, it would be completely separate from what this, this is just dealing with changing out the, the actual light structure. But that's a separate project that we would be looking at.
Ms. Denny?
Yes?
Will we also be controlling the timing of the lighting as well? You know, like when you have, uh, periods of time of seasonal changes and time setbacks, will we be able to control the timing on the lighting as well?
We will absolutely be able to do that, Ms. Kennedy. And, and the difference is currently, the majority of our system has been owned by PICO, and PICO has controlled that. Where now, we are going to be able to control that internally.
Good, especially for daylight savings times, and when that, that occurs twice a year.
It'd be nice to have control over something with PICO. And backtrack while we're at it.
PennDOT's been being good to us this, this meeting, so let's, let's keep them on our good side.
Yes.
And, uh, Ms. Denny, one other question too. You had brought up at the last meeting, I guess you wanted to make sure you had a complete list of the streetlights, has that already been completed?
Yes, Mr. Stackhouse and Mr. Huggins went back through the list again with Mr. Fuller. Thank you for your patience.
Oh, good.
They went back through, we met, double-checked the list, check, double-checked, triple-checked, and, and they are, you know, we think we have a complete list.
Ms. Fuller, yeah, go ahead and continue.
Yep, so the final item on here is the, the adder that we talked about. If you wanted to upgrade those fixtures, the decorative streetlight fixtures that you don't, or streetscape fixtures that you don't own, but you do maintain, that would cost about $15,000 to do that.
We, we talked about that at length, and, and the issue at this point that I would be concerned about is because we probably would have to go out and get some type of an easement agreement, because those businesses pay for the bill. And even though we maintain it, we would have to do some form of an easement agreement to go on their property essentially and, and change what they own. Due to the time constraints, you know, again, there's no financial benefit for us to do this, and it may end up pushing the project back. So, I, I just don't know if it would really, it, it would not benefit the residents as a whole for us to spend another $15,000 on that.
Okay. I guess one question-
Is that something we can market to the actual business owners if they were interested?
Well, and, and that's something we definitely can explore. I mean, now that Mr. Fuller has given us a spec and knows what type of fixture we need to go in there, there, there's nothing stopping them from going on their own.
Yes, just giving them the opportunity to do that, yes.
Would the lighting be different? You know, when you upgrade to the LEDs here, uh, the old lighting, is that going to have a different hue or a different color?
It, it will, I would say, I mean, I, I can tell the difference, you know, obviously, here because of the LEDs we've put in. It may appear to be, depending on what we set the, the standard at, um, it, it could look like a dimmer light. I mean, it, it's a different type of light. I don't think the color will be different, the structure and the fixture will be exactly the same. It, it just may not be, you know, it's not going to be the same lumens of output.
It's, yeah, with LED, it definitely, um, like, we can take something that's 10,000 lumens, and we can replace it with that, that maybe yellow light, and we can replace it with something that's 8,000 lumens or 6,000 lumens. And the, the human eye perceives white light, whitish light, I'll say, better than it does yellow light. So, frankly, the perception usually when we do these is that there's significantly more light after the LED upgrade. They are a little brighter. You know, there is a adjustment period where I'd say, you know, even with thousands of, of these installed in larger municipalities, you may get a few calls that it's very bright. We do ask, hey, we appreciate that, we'll take a look at it, give us two weeks, see if you kind of adjust to it. And a lot of times, people do adjust to it and start to appreciate the, the additional light. So, um, you do, we don't have to decide, actually, I'm not even, I don't even show to you, there is a selection you can make between a pure white light and a warmer white light that's, I don't want to call it yellow, but it's just warmer. Like, if you remember, warm whites with fluorescent lighting, it's kind of like that. There's no cost difference, so we don't ask you to make that decision tonight, but you can make a selection there of something that's a little warmer if you want it to be.
I, I think another way to look at that, Mr. Mullen, is that if we got the, the option with the network control, we can dim the lights around those ones that aren't upgraded to make it more cohesive.
I, I was just picturing driving down the road, and you're going from one light, and then you just notice a different hue or a different color. I'm colorblind, but, uh, even I can pick up the difference.
Yeah, and that also may be a function of like, uh, you have a very old depreciated system, some light bulbs, and the LEDs have the LEDs in the fixture. So, there's no more light bulbs, per se, in them, it's, it's all an integrated fixture. But the, the, you may have an old lamp, you know, that could be three years old, and it's depreciated to 50% of its light output, and you may have a brand-new one next to it. So, and they kind of shift colors a little bit, depending on whether they're old or new. So, yeah, that's-
And how many of the retrofit lights, I'm sorry, yeah, how many, how many actual lights are out there that-
We identified 29.
29, okay. And are they just in the shopping centers?
Yeah, they're-
Areas?
They're along the main thoroughfare, so I guess along Route 30, but then also on some of the side streets there, but all your shopping areas.
Okay.
I had one question about the streetscape retrofit as well. And I understand that, I certainly don't want to get bogged down in the process of trying to get easements from everyone that's there right now. But with the anticipated influx of new businesses coming into Lincoln Highway, there's a few that we know of right now. Can we, I mean, I have like, I'm stuck here. See, I didn't have coffee. With the new businesses, could they be required to do the streetscape?
If, if it is a situation, one of two ways- If if it is a situation, one of two ways, it can be integrated as a design standard in the new zoning ordinance. Or if it by chance is a conditional use, you can make that as a condition, the same as the board has done with brick and whatnot over over the years.
I'd like to go design standard on Lincoln Highway.
Okay.
Put it put it in there and and then that's where I'm with Paul on the same. You know, we're going for this look on Lincoln Highway that we want to have some uh, uniformity.
Again, if the board wishes, we will make it happen.
If lights are changing. You know.
We will make it if if I was just trying to save some money, but.
Oh, I don't want to spend the money if we don't have to. And and I don't, again, I don't want to get bogged down with trying to get easements from everybody. I'm just trying to think of a way to work a workaround.
Right.
Out of the twenty nine, how how many are actually along Route thirty?
I don't recall off the top of my head. On some, on the one side street, I recall there was maybe about ten of them. So, but I'm. Going off memory, it could be like twenty on Lincoln and nine off off Lincoln.
It would primarily be between, you know, where we have, which is is municipal to North Bailey. Down North Bailey is is primarily where it would be.
And then be added to things going uh, east now too.
Yeah, my first thought would be, you know, if if we have. If everything looks continuous along thirty. And so I don't know if we can get an idea of how many lights.
I guess that's a, Mike, and and I don't know if. I know today you had sent Ray a copy of the map. Does that help you at all for me to bring that up?
Uh, we, to see where they are. Uh, I'll throw out one other option. I could do that. That might take me a while to actually get into the system and it's a, it's an. Interactive map, GIS map. The other option is you could. You don't have to decide on this right now. I mean, you could go with the main project. And you could come back and say, we want to do a change to that project for these additional lights. So. Uh, I'll I'll leave that up to you if you want to uh, do it that way. Um, but I also.
When I sign in, I can, you're up.
It could happen.
See if I remember my passwords all.
No pressure at all.
Well, it's.
You can call somebody for a lifeline if you'd like.
Yeah, on my computer, it's already in.
Yes.
Is that it? That's it.
Actually, Ray, I sent to you today what your password is.
It said in the email. Hold on, I can bring it up for you.
Let's go in under your password. Okay, we're in.
Have fun.
Okay, have fun. Great. So, of course, you always want to put the zoom little button right where you want to.
Sure.
There will be a quiz on how I did this.
Sorry, Mac user. You probably have a Chrome that you're used to just flunking it.
Yes, we missed any.
Yes, sir.
If if we just went with the upgrade along thirty, and that that wouldn't include all twenty nine, we'd still need the easement.
Well, that's what he's pulling up to see, so you can have a better idea of where those are actually located.
Okay.
Because that's that's kind of a significant number of of lights and. You know, I I think it's better for us to see it and plot it before.
Okay.
But they don't see that.
Yeah, I'd have to plug in my computer. I'm not sure why I'm not. My tables look different than these and I should be able to filter for a category that I have them in and it's just not. Pulling up the fixtures right now. I'm not sure why. I do. So I I can, I can do that. Would you like to go through the rest of the presentation?
Yeah, yeah, let's finish that. You can send that, uh, you know, after the meeting or tomorrow.
No, what what I was gonna suggest, he can finish the presentation, um, run out, his computer's in the car.
Oh, oh.
And and we could have, oh, you have it here?
Yeah.
Oh, even better. Well, then hold on up. Hold on up. We'll get you in.
What, you want to finish the presentation first and then come back to this? I'm I'm fine with that.
Yeah. So on the financials, I think that's where we left off. Um. The uh. So the final option is that this adder that we're talking about, uh, the next slide we can go to. Is really just more details of the financials. Uh, we don't need to go through that. But I do want to point out, we then show you cash flows of these to show you the value, the time uh, or over time, the savings. If you go to the first cash flow slide there, this is the base upgrade option. And it's a little tough to see here, but in the lower right corner, uh, when you take all the savings over twenty years. And compare that to take out the project costs. This project's going to generate five hundred and thirty four thousand dollars in net savings for uh, the municipality. So that's the base upgrade. And then if we go to the next slide, you'll see that it's very similar. Uh, it's about five hundred and twenty six thousand dollars. The last one is the one that's really interesting with the network controls because it actually has higher savings. So I want to show you the impact of that over twenty years is the savings are much higher over twenty years. So even though that project costs a lot more, you're still at over uh, five hundred thousand dollars in net savings. So what was like a delta of like sixty thousand in upfront costs? Now you're talking about a delta of only like twenty thousand dollars over the twenty year period because you do get those additional savings with it. So. Um, I just want to point that out.
And just so the board understands, we did budget for this full amount in the bond proceeds that we had taken this year. So the savings essentially that we will get, we will put towards paying it off in that five year period. But this isn't cash flow coming out of the township.
Okay. Perfect.
So we can go on to the, I think probably the last slide. So the next steps are to um, uh, take action on a resolution if you want to move forward with the project or not. Uh, select one of the control options and then decide if you want to do the streetscape adder. And again, I I will pull up my computer and try to show you exactly where those streetscape uh, uh, fixtures are located. Um, but uh, uh, again, you could do that as a, as an additional action. On the project if you want to at some point, if if you need to discuss that aspect a little bit more.
Okay.
We we have no problem with that, you know, lagging behind the the base project a little bit. And then uh, you've already initiated the buyback agreement, so that's in process. Uh, after you get back the buyback uh, approval and you now own the fixtures, if you do move forward with the project. Then the next step would be to execute the construction contract. Uh, our resolution that we've put together for you, it actually authorizes staff and management to execute that, so we don't have to come back for another. Decision on that. That would, that's part of the resolution. And then after that, we would order materials and a couple of months after that, we would have the materials and uh, install. And I think um. We're estimating, this is about twelve working days to do this project. It's a moving operation. Uh, they're only at each fixture for a uh, maybe twenty minutes tops. They're in a bucket truck. It's just like they were maintaining the fixture. There's no special, usually no special flagging or cones or anything. It just, they move along and it's a very low impact. Uh, construction process.
Okay. Yeah. Commissioners, any questions?
If we uh, agreed to move ahead with this this evening, estimated time of completion?
Based on, I'm guessing the buyback, let's be conservative, it could be November that the buyback comes through. Hopefully it'll be before that, so. I can't order any fixtures until that happens. Uh, so we'd be Q one. You know, it would, it would, it would be started and finished in Q one.
Perfect, thank you.
All right, Dan, let me ask if there's any questions from the residents. First I'll ask here at the township building, any questions from residents? If not, any questions from Zoom world?
I don't have any hands raised at this time.
Hey, commissioners, I'll entertain a motion to uh. Approve, are are we doing the resolution twenty twenty two dash thirty two?
So um, as per the last slide, uh, the twenty twenty two thirty three, you're saying hold until we get the buyback? That is for the installation. So the very first one is for cooperative purchasing and participation in phases three and four of regional streetlight procurement program.
I'm sorry, I'm not sure what you're looking.
So on our agenda, you sent over two resolutions. One is for the cooperative purchasing and participation in phases three and four. The second one is to complete the contract for installation services with armor.
Yeah, you, so item number two is all you're looking at. Item three, you do not have to do at this point. The resolution assumes you'll do that after the resolution is passed.
So this is to be held until we get the buyback agreement approved. Okay.
Yeah, and you don't even fill it out till. Till probably we get the buyback.
So, okay, so the the next. Item, just so the board knows exactly what they're. Pulling up the uh. Does there need to be a, for this resolution, do they need to choose? Which option they're taking or just that they're participating?
Uh, usually there'd be a a motion to adopt the resolution with with the preference for the control system that you would like to have.
Okay. Yeah, if the board could just let us know which control system they prefer to have.
All right, I'll take a consensus. Commissioners, everyone in favor of the network option? Say aye. Aye.
Aye.
That's good. And uh, entertain the motion to approve resolution twenty twenty two dash thirty two. Moved, moved by Commissioner Evans, second by Commissioner Tindaro. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion's good, four zero. I did see a couple of hands raised there at the last minute.
Mr. Haysham?
John, how you doing?
I'm good. How are you?
Good.
Um, can I ask a question on this? Was this put out for an RFP or anything, or was this put out for multiple bids?
It it was. This is through DVR PC and they've done uh, three rounds of this for over sixty municipalities. They did the procurement, the competitive bidding for materials and labor and design services. So. Uh, every municipality can piggyback off of that uh, official procurement.
So is this one company that put together this procurement process or was it? A separate uh, organization that solicited multiple uh, providers for the service?
It was Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission that uh, was the procurement agent and they evaluated. Uh, multiple manufacturers and ran through a very comprehensive RFP process. To select uh, the vendors, the manufacturers and the install partners.
So. Delaware Valley Regional, I'm sorry, what was the rest of it?
Regional Planning Commission.
Planning Commission. Uh, does the DVR PC have an interest in what they selected? Like a financial interest?
They do not, no. They're they're an agency that supports municipalities in the four, well, not only in Pennsylvania, but also in Delaware. Or I'm sorry, uh, parts of New Jersey. They're they're a quasi governmental agency that is there to support. Uh, municipalities, so they have no interest.
Mr. Haysham, part part of their mission and goals as a planning commission is to. Reduce climate change and the effects of greenhouse gases, also to help communities become more sustainable. Um, one of their initiatives is through um, LED conversion in order to save on energy costs.
Right, I I do understand that. Uh, I mean, this is, this is actually my business. This is what I've done for thirteen years, so. I just want to be assured that the provider is not a for-profit organization. That is basically just giving you a sales pitch. And then they're selecting multiple manufacturers from which they're going to purchase fixtures, but they're still the single point of contact. For the uh, installation and controlling the project. I mean, twenty nine lights for a hundred and some thousand dollars and they quoted twenty minutes per fixture. We're looking at a ten hour project of actual labor. Granted, it's a bucket truck going down the road, but twenty nine trucks for a hundred plus thousand dollars. Or a hundred and seventy five thousand if you go with the central control system, that's quite a bit. I just want to make sure there's some kind of uh, vetting process going on here.
Yeah, Mr. Haysham, I I I think unfortunately you came in a little late. We're not talking about twenty nine uh, streetlights. That was twenty nine retrofits on Lincoln Highway alone. That we were discussing whether or not we would do them additionally. That would have been fourteen thousand dollars if we did. The twenty nine on Lincoln Highway. This, how many are we talking about overall?
Two hundred and forty six are in the project.
Two hundred and forty six.
Okay, that makes a lot more sense. Yeah, that makes a lot more sense. I I'm sorry, I just raised, I did come into the meeting a little late. Um, but the twenty nine lights for that number was really uh, large. Two forty six makes a lot more sense.
All right, John, I I appreciate the comments though, John. All right, John, I, I appreciate the comments though, John.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Did we have another hand raised or?
No, that's all at this time.
We made the motion. It's been approved. Mr. Fuller, did you want to bring up the street map with your computer?
That's your call. I'm willing to, to do that.
You know, just to save a little bit of time, I'm, I'm fine on skipping this part. If you want to send that to us, just so we can take a look at it.
I think I can create some nice maps that are going to be easier to view and, you know, I'll send that to Kristen and, and it can be passed along. And again, it can be added at any point, really. The, the availability of the products for those twenty-nine fixtures is actually pretty good. So, and we do still have like a month or more till we even get past the buyback process.
Okay, perfect.
Great. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you again, Mr. Fuller, for your patience with us in this process.
Just the, get out to everybody again. We went over this at, we had an entire meeting pretty much where we went through all of this and showed how much money we will save by doing this. This is an investment that will pay it, pay for itself and pay back into the coffers pretty quickly, so.
After the initial five years, it's paid off. Yes, it absolutely does. It's close to five hundred thousand dollars.
Well worth it. All right, next on the agenda, we have citizens to be heard for agenda items. I'll reach out here to the township building. Any citizens at this time? For agenda items? Thanks, Mike. If not, how about the Zoom world?
No one at this time in the Zoom.
All right, let's keep moving along. Next on the agenda, Township Solicitor, Ms. Camp. How are you this evening?
Hi, everybody. I'm good. Thank you. I'm here for the final, hopefully the hearing on the Act one sixty-seven, which is your stormwater management ordinance update. And we've had a couple of different conversations at prior board meetings. Chester County Water Resources Authority took it upon themselves, which is very helpful to the municipalities in Chester County, to update the model stormwater ordinance. It was originally adopted in twenty thirteen and there have been changes in the state regulations concerning stormwater management that necessitated changes to countywide ordinance. And every township within, within Chester County is required to update their stormwater management ordinance. The majority of the changes are, you know, best practices, definitional changes. The one significant change that we did speak about at two prior meetings was the new addition of a section seven oh six, which requires inspections of BMPs after they're installed. The board gave us direction to have that section be completed where the municipality would actually perform the inspection of the stormwater management facilities. The cost of, the cost of the township incurs through hiring the engineer or whatever professional you hire to do those inspections will be passed off to the property owner who installs the stormwater management facilities. But we did advertise this ordinance. There was a proof of publication that I received from the Daily Local News. It appeared on September twentieth, twenty twenty-two. I also sent a copy of the ordinance to the Daily Local and to the Law Library. The ordinance has been, you know, Arrow took the lead in pulling this together. Based on the county model, we had several meetings with Arrow Consultants as well as Ray and Kristen Denny. And again, it's hopefully at this point, the board understands why we're being required to do this and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Commissioners, any questions on this? I know we've been back and forth about it. Questions on the final draft? Open it up to residents. Any questions from residents? I know this has been advertised since our last meeting and we are just here to finalize it. Any questions in Zoom world?
None at this time.
Then this is easy. Entertain a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero six, the county township stormwater management ordinance.
So moved.
So moved. Moved by Commissioner Kennedy, second by Commissioner Tindaro. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye. Aye.
And motion's good, four zero. Thank you, Ms. Camp.
Thank you. Do you want me to stick around, Kristen, for any reasons? I don't know.
Actually, if, if you wouldn't mind, Kristen and possibly Mr. Mullin, we consider waiving the agenda to address the ordinance for the emergency response team. The chief is also here.
Yes. Did we have the police chief lead into this or Ms. Camp?
Take, I'm, I'm able to start. I don't know if the chief, the chief there. So we actually, my first time that I was asked to look at this was for Upper Euclid Township, who actually adopted an ordinance last week. The Chester County Articles of Agreement have been prepared for the Chester County Emergency Response Commission. The intergovernmental cooperation law requires that the board, if you're going to enter an intergovernmental agreement to basically cooperate with other public entities, such as the other municipalities of Chester County, they're going to be part of this emergency response commission, that you should be adopting an ordinance. So several Chester County municipalities currently together cooperate for police emergency responses. And the, the name of that organization today is called the Chester County Regional Emergency Response Team. The Police Chief Association in Chester County over the past two years met to discuss formalizing this team and creating a legal entity known as the commission. The association engaged two lawyers, Michael Noon and Andrew Gronges, who have a lot of experience in police and representing police agencies. They recommended that the commission be created in accordance with the Pennsylvania Intergovernmental Cooperation Act. They then drew up these articles, which include specific provisions regarding the financing, the organizational structure, the governance, the authority and the powers of the commission. The initial members of the commission are East Vincent Township, Kennet Township, Skookel Township, Tridiferen Township and the Borough of Downingtown. They're identified as being member municipalities. Other municipalities such as COW may join into this commission by adopting the ordinance and then signing on to the Articles of Agreement. So that's what's being presented to you this evening. We would have to advertise this ordinance to adopt it at your next meeting. I believe the financial contribution is, Kristen, please correct me if I'm wrong, is it three thousand dollars?
I, I read three thousand.
Okay, I think it's three thousand dollars. So, and your police chief would be the liaison or would serve on, you know, would attend these meetings on behalf of COW. And it's really to provide emergency responses in the events of, you know, very serious, significant events where multi-jurisdictional police are needed.
So for years, we've had an MOU with other municipalities regarding our participation on the emergency response team. So this commission is new and it won't just include the emergency response team, but any shared services among municipalities and police departments in Chester County going forward, which could be the county accident reconstruction team, the major emergency response team. Municipalities buy equipment all the time, right? And it, you know, part of this commission is also to avoid each municipality buying a piece of equipment that could potentially be shared among a group of municipalities. If we don't sign this agreement, the current MOU that we have to participate on the ERT will expire at the end of the year. I don't know if Kristen mentioned it, this commission is also going to cover liability insurance so that when our officers are, are deployed to the team, whether it be ERT, major incident response, the SCAT team, which is a reconstruction team, the commission will cover liability insurance. Municipality, the township would still be responsible for workers' comp or, or any other medical type claims that could potentially arise out of our participation on the team. So I think it's a good idea. I, I think we can all agree. We see the issues that we've been dealing with the last couple of years with recruitment and retention and shared services. I think are the way of the future. To avoid duplication of effort and costs and those kind of things. So I, I would strongly suggest that we participate. We could, if at some point in the future we're not happy, we could withdraw. That there is a provision in there for that, so.
And with, it's including emergency responses, so does this also include the fire department?
No.
It's just a police department?
Just police services, correct.
And it's kind of like a cog? I, I guess just for the police version of this. You, you were speaking about sharing certain equipment. That I guess for each township to purchase themselves is just maybe too much money, but to share it, kind of like the cog idea.
And Chief, if you could go in specifically what ERT more or less responds to, it's, it's not the run-of-the-mill everyday.
Oh, we're talking SWAT kind of thing? Okay, all right, so this is.
Yeah, yeah. So it's, it's a, a specialized group of individuals that does specialized training for extreme emergency situations. So Chief, please, you're.
We, we currently have two officers who are, are assigned to SWAT or use it interchangeably with ERT, but it, it's the equivalent of SWAT. And as Kristen mentioned, you know, high, high-risk warrants, barricaded gunman type situations. We, we've used that team regularly over the years. And if it were a cost that the township would have to incur to equip and outfit a group of our own officers, it, it, the cost would be astronomical.
And, and why is the MOU being dropped at the end of the year?
This, this commission replaces the, the current MOU process.
It's a more formal entity that, that, that the police chiefs felt and were recommended by council to create a more, I don't know, just more formalized entity under the Intergovernmental Cooperation Act. And I think to deal with some of the issues that the chief mentioned, liability issues, you know, identifying, you know, if, if you're two police officers that typically are the ones that respond, you know, who, who are they covered by? So they will be covered for the commission, but workman's comp will be covered by COW under your own policies.
Right now SWAT has an executive board under their current MOU structure. This commission will oversee all shared resources. So it expands beyond just SWAT.
And presently, we just have an MOU with Downingtown?
For SWAT?
Uh, yes.
No.
Nothing?
No, there are, there are multiple municipalities. Chester Kearney, Chester County Regional Emergency Response Team. So we are, it started out as the Western Chester County Emergency Response Team and then it kind of expanded a little bit. So no, it, it's, it's a, a large number of, I don't know if I have it. Here, there's, there's probably at least fifteen participating municipalities.
And with this agreement, it's just five?
Five were the initial, initial, but it's going to be quite a lot more than that. I don't have the exact number in front of me, but I know probably twenty, chief, I thought were going to be involved. Oh, here we go. There was, let's see, let me count. Those COW, Chester County Sheriff's Office, Coatsville, Downingtown, East Town, East Brandywine, East Coventry, East Ballowfield, East Pikeville, East Vincent, East Whiteland, Kennet Square, Kennet Township, Malvern Borough, Valley Township, West Vincent, West Pikeville, West COW, West Brandywine, Upper Euclid, who I mentioned in passing this last week, Tridiferen, Spring City, Skookel Township, Sadsbury Township, Phoenixville and Parksburg.
Like twenty-six or something?
Yeah, it's a lot.
Came up a few short. The Western team had merged with the Northern team at, at some point several years ago. So, yeah, that, that accounts for all of the municipalities.
Okay.
Five twenty-five.
This is point if you're.
Thousand dollars annually?
The, the amount can increase or decrease. Actually, I think there's a mechanism for that contribution to change, but the initial contribution is three thousand dollars for next year.
Yeah, it, I, I've been here ten years. It started at twenty-five hundred. It's, it's been three thousand for the last couple of years. We also participate on the county SCAT team, which is the Accident Reconstruction Team. That's, I think that's fifteen hundred dollars a year. But again, we, we, we get a lot of benefit from participating on those teams.
We need it.
Commissioner, there's any other questions on this? I think it's a no-brainer.
Yeah.
Yeah. Way to go.
Yeah, residents, let me ask if there's any questions.
None at this time.
Is there?
Yeah. Mr. Mullin, the action is just to authorize us to go ahead and advertise it and it'll be brought for you for a hearing at the next meeting.
Okay, good. Yeah, I was going through my papers looking for the resolution, so entertain a motion to advertise.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Evans, second by Commissioner Tindaro. All in favor? Say aye.
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 Motion's good, four zero. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And who, who would be our committee person? Chief?
Yes, sir.
Okay. In good hands.
Every, every municipality's chief is a voting member.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, Ms. Camp, does that wrap things up for you?
It does. Thank you.
Hope you have a great evening.
Good night.
Nice weekend.
Moving on, Township Engineer, we have a request for payment.
Yes, good evening, commissioners, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Casey Lala with Arrow Consulting. Great to see you again. Nice seeing you at Community Day. That was, that was a great event.
We had a great time.
I think so. I think so. And it was a great turnout. Carl Schmidt is here as well from Arrow. The first item for approval tonight is application for payment number one from Brightfields Incorporated in the amount of two thousand eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars fifty-five cents for work completed through August thirty-first for the two fifty-eight horseshoe drive demolition project. The original contract was seventy-three thousand six hundred dollars, so we're just at the start of it. We had some emails today. They've made great progress on the demolition. And knock on wood, Monday we'll be doing backfill, but with the rain coming, I doubt that's going to happen, but we'll see. We'll see. So we're seeking tonight to get approval for application for payment number one for Brightfields.
Commissioners, any questions on this? If not, entertain a motion to approve the payment.
So moved.
Moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Tindaro, second by Commissioner Evans. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion's good, four, uh, four zero.
Thank you very much.
Continue.
And the second item tonight is the, we're ready for bid for the Park Drive Convenience System project. We are looking to bid this almost immediately as soon as the board, the commissioners approve it to go out. I just want to describe the project for you. You have the, the, the plan in front of you.
Yes, thank you.
Kind of to the untrained eye, you have, on the left is the existing system, on the right is the proposed system. It looks identical, except we're going to be installing larger inlets. One new inlet to collect a, a low, a low point on Park Drive and increase the size of the pipe. And let me read the exact description to you. The current issue at the Park Drive Metadrive intersection is that runoff during large storm events is not being conveyed off the roadway. And will stay on the roadway for a period of time after the storm. And this is being caused by a combination of inlets and pipes lacking capacity as well as a lack of an inlet at that low spot on Park Drive. The design will use a combination of larger pipes, better performing stormwater inlets and one additional inlet to reduce flooding and standing water on the roadway in that area. So we're seeking approval tonight for the, for us to go out to bid for this project.
I, I love visuals. Is there a way to look at a map? Just because I know we had some flooding in Park Drive from Hurricane Ida.
Serious flooding.
And I'm hoping this will help out.
It will help.
At least one area, because we had some terrible damage. Some homes were just devastated. Folks actually had to leave their home until the work was complete.
Right.
Lost everything.
Yeah, the entire first floor, basement, everything.
Definitely. And the total amount of new pipe to be installed is, is, is over four hundred feet of new pipe, much larger to convey the water out.
I will apologize because the version I have has comments on it.
Oh.
So it, it.
Might look a little, look a little funny.
They have maps. I just want to see the overall view of the neighborhood.
There you go. So yeah, there's a stickies on here. Apologize for those. Yeah, there's a stickies on here. Apologize for those. Those are just comments. So what you can see is the existing, again, on the left, you've got the boxes are the, the inlets, and this light shaded line is the existing stormwater pipe. Way too small. Higher intensity storms, much more water. We need bigger conveyance. So on the right, you'll see in bold the larger, the, the existing inlets will be, will be pulled and replaced with modern inlets. All the pipe will be excavated and replaced with concrete pipe. It'll last lifetimes. We're not, we're looking at a couple of projects for next year with the corrugated metal pipe that doesn't last more than 25 years and starts to fail. This will be, this will be concrete pipe, so it'll last generations upon generations. And you can see, if I can, okay. I believe this. That low point is right here in the center of the draw, of the intersection. So that will be the new, essentially the low point, so that'll have a new inlet which will collect the water and get the water off the road.
And how large of a pipe are you going to?
Oh, sure. There's a couple different sizes. I've got the. Yeah, it's 23 inches to 32 inches. I'm sorry, 33? 33 inches. So much, much larger increase in pipe.
Perfect.
Yep.
Okay. This is all in the street?
Yeah, yes. There's no, everything's existing in the street. There is no, there are no easements needed or anything. This is all existing, existing infrastructure.
Perfect, yeah. I think that'll definitely help that neighborhood.
Absolutely.
Or at least that section of it, so, okay. Into, oh, any questions from residents, or did I already ask that? And anybody from Zoom world?
Yes, sir.
Sounds good. Okay, so we need to advertise it. So Commissioners, entertain a motion to advertise for a public bid for this project. So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Evans, second by Commissioner Tindaro. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
I see Jane waving, so I'm going to say that's a yes. Alright, motion's good 4-0. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And just one last thing. Also, stormwater project, you had previously approved the North Bailey Stormwater Project and the Two Barley Chief Projects, plus also the South Lloyd Avenue Stream Bank Project. Those three were put out to bid earlier this week. The Stream Bank Project is being put out to bid tomorrow. So we will have all the bids results for you. The North Bailey, the Two Barley Chief will be well in advance of the meeting. We're probably only going to be able to get you the South Lloyd Stream Bank about two days before the meeting. We're going to do an expedited, expedited review of those bids and deliver that to you as soon as we can before your meeting.
So is this for next meeting, or?
Yes.
October 13th, yeah. So you'll be approving four bids for additional stormwater projects at that meeting.
Appreciate that.
Absolutely, my pleasure.
Alright.
Any, any other just general questions, or?
Commissioners?
How are we going to turn the Phillies around?
Oh, I know. And losing to the Cubs, come on. Thank you very much.
Alright, Casey, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, Township Manager. I missed any. What do we have here?
The first thing is, and I apologize, I, I had received a notice from the PennDOT, the PennDOT Engineers to participate in the vulnerable, I'm sure, vulnerable road user special rule. This basically was they had received funding and they did not get a large timeframe to get municipalities who were interested in this to participate. So I had to sign the, the interest, the letter of interest before a meeting. Don't like to do that, but what I was asking is that the board ratified ratification of the vulnerable road user special rule, year one approach municipal participation document. That does not put us in any financial harms way. We have no financial layouts with this. This is a grant from the federal government that PennDOT is going to use to install enhanced signals in what they consider to be vulnerable road areas. And Lincoln Highway was one of those areas that were identified.
Are they, these were crosswalks?
Yes.
The lights?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
What, what page is that? I'm not sure if I wrote a note or. Okay, and we just needed to meet the three criteria. Okay, Commissioners, any questions on this?
I think it's great.
Residents, any questions? None from the Zoom world?
None at this time.
Alright, entertain a motion for the ratification. The VRU. So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Evans, second by Commissioner Tindaro. All in favor? Say aye.
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 Motion's good 4-0.
The only other thing I wanted to bring to the board's attention is that I will be sending out a doodle poll for the meetings for the month of November. We usually only have one meeting the month of November because the Cato, the Cato Fall Conference, and then with the Thanksgiving holiday, it's hard to get two meetings in there. I mean, I don't mind, but it's, it's up to the flavor of the board if they want to try to squeeze two meetings in, or if they just want to do one meeting the month of November.
Yeah, and what is it, November 10th is the Cato meeting?
Correct.
Which I'm actually attending because I'm part of it.
Right.
So, yeah, send out the doodle.
Why don't we just have a turkey here on Thanksgiving?
Yeah. You can meet me at my mom's house. It'll be a better turkey.
We can have another meeting. There's, that's, that was the only date that we were going to have a meeting. With the holiday coming up, we can maybe pick a different date to have a regular.
Yes.
Meeting. All of us and still go to Cato on the 10th.
Yeah, what I was going to suggest is that we had a meeting, since Cato's the 10th, the 24th is Thanksgiving, that we met on the 17th.
17?
I'm going to send a doodle poll up, Ms. Tindaro, so that we make sure everybody's available.
Okay.
I know it's a busy time of the year for everybody.
Done. Be on some township one of those weeks.
Isn't that?
Yeah. Historically, you know, this is the first time Cato will be meeting again post-pandemic. But historically, it was always one meeting the month of November because of Cato and Thanksgiving.
Yeah, this is our first real November as a board without COVID getting in the way of, knock on wood.
Yeah, I was going to say.
Yeah, it's been a couple of years.
I missed any? Anything else under Township Manager?
No, that's all. Thank you.
Along, ordinance and resolutions for consideration. We already did the stormwater. Completed, we're tabling 2022-33.
Correct.
And we have a request to consider resolution 2022-34, acknowledging the receipt of the 2023 Minimum Municipal Obligation Worksheet for inclusion of said obligation, the Non-Union Pension Plan, and 2023 calendar budget. Miss Denny, you want to elaborate on that?
Yes, at our last meeting, we have two pension funds with, with Cowan Township, one being the Police Officers Pension Fund, the second being the Non-Uniform Pension Fund, which covers all other full-time employees. Every year, an amount is, is determined, called the MMO, which is what is necessary to pay in order to keep the, the pension solvent. This pension is actually administered through PMRS at the state. So they determine what that amount would be to keep the pension solvent.
Lisa had a breakdown, right, for us here? Looking for the page. Oh, here it is. Commissioners, any questions on it?
No.
Is this just more informational for us?
Mm-hmm.
Pretty much? I have questions from residents. If not, entertain a motion to approve resolution 2022-34. So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Evans, second by Commissioner Tindaro. All in favor? Say aye.
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 That's good, 4-0. Turning the page. We have minutes to approve. Board of Commissioners, minutes of September 8th. Commissioners, any additions, corrections needed? Yeah, Denise, there is one typo, and of course I didn't circle it. Not that it's huge, important, but if I find it, I'll, I'll just let you know. I was laughing when I was reading. Trying to remember what page it was. Alright, if no, no other questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes. So moved.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Evans, second by Commissioner Kennedy. All in favor? Say aye.
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 Motion's good, 4-0. Now that's going to bug me. I should have just circled it. Next on the agenda, acknowledgement of the minutes from the Planning Commission meeting on, from August 16th, 2022. Commissioners, any questions on that? If not, entertain a motion. So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Evans, second by Commissioner Tindaro. All in favor? Say aye.
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 Motion's good, 4-0. Moving on to the Finance Department. Ms. Swan, how are you this evening?
I'm doing great. How are you?
Unbelievable.
Fantastic. Thanks for having me tonight. Finance report, although our accounts are doing well, the investments that we've made over the last six to nine months are bringing in some wonderful returns, and I do anticipate that continuing throughout the rest of the year. We're about 75% through the year and have collected approximately 84% of our expected revenue and only expended about 50% of the anticipated budget through August. So we're doing really well, and again, I expect that to continue through the rest of the year. We started our payroll migration to ADP, which will also help to streamline our accounts payable process. The first ADP processing paycheck will be October 27th. And the shortened suite of it for the Finance Department, audit season's over, budget reviews are in full swing, and the board should be receiving their packets probably within the next week or two to review and question. And that is all I have for tonight.
Alright, thank you, Lisa. Commissioners, any questions on the financials?
No.
Your work always looks great. It really does.
Very good.
Really appreciate you.
Awesome. Thank you, everyone.
You and your team. You know, I love getting emails from Janet. You know that.
I would be nowhere without them. I'd be nowhere without them. They're awesome.
I think I have to sign a couple of checks before I leave, right?
Yes, please.
So we have some, the check run, motion to approve, check run 48,844 to 48,967.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Tindaro, second by Commissioner Kennedy. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Good, 4-0. Alright, moving right along, meat and potatoes. Directors report. We'll start with Police Chief Elias.
Good evening again, everyone. Anything noteworthy in the August report? I think I discussed with the board during the August meeting. The only other thing I wanted to mention in the report, I don't know if you had a chance to look at it, there's an attachment, which is a new youth mentoring program that we just introduced called Just Ask Blue. We'll be piloting it with the Chester County Intermediate Unit on October 28th. And we've had a series of meetings with them, and they're looking forward to it as, as we are as well. So I'll, I'll report more on that after, after, after that event. Today, the senior high school was placed on lockdown. They had a student who reportedly brought a gun to school in a, in a backpack. So the school was placed on lockdown. Fortunately, they, they resolved that issue rather quickly and classes resumed. It occurred around noon today. But I just wanted to take a minute to mention this Safe to Say Something tip line, because that's how the, that's how the tip came in. For anyone not aware, Safe to Say Something is, is run by the Pennsylvania Office of Attorney General. The program is intended to help youth and adults recognize warning signs and signals, especially when there's chatter about a potential incident on social media. It doesn't, nor should it take the place of 911 in an actual emergency, but I would encourage students and parents who aren't aware of it to use it, especially when there is talk of a potentially violent activity or something that may place students at risk at the high school. It's anonymous. It's monitored 24/7. There's an app. You could do it online. There's a telephone number you could call. You talk to a live person in a crisis center, and they immediately get that information to school administrators and law enforcement. And that was the case today, and we got the information quickly and were able to resolve the matter quickly. Sometimes when these things fester on social media, it's that whole whisper down the line thing. It starts out. And then before you know it, it just mushrooms into something, and the whole goal of this is to prevent something bad from happening, like, right from the start. So again, Safe to Say Something, it's been in existence for a while. Not a lot of people know about it, but I did want to take time to talk about it tonight. Last thing I wanted to mention, two nights ago, 1:30 in the morning, we had the ambush-style shooting in the shops of Wedgwood Parking Lot. We're being assisted by Chester County detectives. Fortunately, neither of the victims were injured. We're attempting to determine motive at this point. So we, typically anytime something like this happens, people always ask, well, is, is it, is it safe out there, right? Because you had mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, Commissioner Evans, that we've, we've had a number of these incidents over the last few months. Both victims in this case claimed to be doordashers, right? They were parked between two large construction vehicles. Again, 1:30 in the morning, all businesses closed, no one else around. I can't say at any certainty with this point whether it was a targeted or random attack. I would just encourage everyone, especially when you're out that time of night, depending on the location, to just be aware of your surroundings and not potentially put yourself in a position where you may jeopardize your safety or the safety of someone else in the vehicle with you. I'll report more on this as, as the investigation progresses. Unfortunately, that's about all I can give tonight in the way of detail. But you mentioned it, and we have gotten calls from residents who've raised concern. So I'd be remiss if I didn't say anything about it. Test coming up October 23rd, entry-level police officer test. That'll be the fourth one in 18 months, which is unprecedented. We've advertised on job sites, social media, universities, including Lincoln and Cheney. We've actually received more applications this time than the last time, so the ad push is working. I attended a Coffee with the Chiefs event yesterday, Commissioner Tindaro was there, that was sponsored by Our Lady of the Rosary Church on 17th Ave, and we actually had a female applicant who saw it on our Facebook page, the advertisement and the Coffee with the Chiefs event, and drove from Burlington, New Jersey here to drop an application on, so.
Great.
Hopefully, hopefully the turnout will be better than every other department around here's experience in the last couple of years. You have my report from, from last month. I'd be happy to answer any questions or anything else I talked about. anything else I talked about tonight.
Thank you, Chief. Commissioners, any questions?
No, I want to thank you again for being on top of everything and what you said about being aware of where you are and when you're there. This is suburbia. I've been living here, I don't know, six years now, thirty-two years of my life on the streets of New York City. I can tell you, I lived in a, you know, fairly safe neighborhood, but there's a very safe neighborhood, but there's crime out there. People are always looking for an opportunity. And my walk home from the subway included, I walk this block here, then I cross over because there's doormen at those two buildings, then I cross here and I always have my eyes open and I'm always looking around. I think everyone can just maybe slow down in what they're doing on their phones and stuff and just be aware of where they are, who's around them. And it would make your life a lot easier.
Yeah, we're not, we're not immune to the
No.
to these problems that are going on all, all around us.
All around.
So like you said, whether you live in a big city or live in suburbia.
And also, there was no gun found at Coatsville today, right? At the school?
Correct. Right. No gun, no threat. Like I said, the tip went immediately from the crisis center to administration and law enforcement and within a relatively short period of time, that, that situation was resolved.
Fantastic. Where can people find the Safe to Say Something tip line?
So if you, if you Google Safe to Say Something, it'll, it'll pull up the website. It explains the program and, you know, how to download the app, the phone number. It gives you an overview of what the program is all about. There's a lot of information on there. Very helpful.
Thank you for everything, really.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Chief. Next, we have Fire Department Chief Taylor. Patrick, how are you?
Good. How's everybody tonight?
Patrick.
So first, I wanted to say thank, I know Abby isn't here and I don't believe she's online, but thank you very much for the invite to Cowan Community Day. It was great to be back in the community after, I believe, two and a half, three years not being able to do it. So it was great to see all the residents and kids enjoying the trucks and even the parents too. Kind of gave them a special treat. Unfortunately, we did have a call midway through, but we got to make a little noise and really give them a show. But thank you again for the invite for that. Our call volume again remains up a lot. Kind of have to chuckle every time Commissioner Evans makes motion of social media. I know there's numerous Route Thirty pages out there with the bypass and I, I know probably in the Cowan Township stretch of the Route Thirty bypass is probably one of the busiest, if not the busiest, when it comes to traffic and accidents and things like that. We're, we're pretty much on it just about every morning and every evening. But, and I know there was mentioned yesterday, oh, why so many trucks for just a minor accident? And the short answer is safety and we don't always know what an incident will require. It's just our standard response. While it seems minor, mobile trucks provide safety to responders. From a blocking perspective, we have so many distracted drivers out there on the phones, the sun glare, you can't always see. So it's a safety thing. Obviously, an ambulance is standard. State police cars and then our fire police that are typically the farthest back. So that's kind of standard for that.
And Patrick, if, if you only had one truck there, social media would be saying, can you believe they only sent one truck?
You can't win, can you?
No.
But not only safety for the incident, safety for us. Exactly. But I, I do have to kind of sit back and laugh every time you mention social media. Because it's not just the township page, Route Thirty pages, so on and so forth. One of the big things I did want to bring up tonight was back on August nineteenth, our public education officer and one of our firefighter EMTs received education from the Red Cross on the new style of smoke alarms, which are bed shakers. These are for the hearing impaired. So basically, and, and I didn't receive the education, so I can't necessarily speak a whole lot to it. But basically, obviously, smoke alarms, if you're of the hearing impaired or deaf, can't hear it. They don't have that light, things like that. So it's designed to shake your bed. I think there are some alarm clocks out there like that too, but it functions in the same way. There is information on our website, one-firecompany.com, as well as the Red Cross. I believe we were already contacted so far to do an install, which is great. We want to make everybody safe. So that is free of cost or free of charge all around. So any questions, like I said, see our website, contact myself and we'll, we just want to keep everybody safe. Other than that, our, our fire prevention open house is scheduled for Wednesday, October twelfth from six-thirty to eight-thirty. A lot of activities planned and we hope to see everybody there. And that's all I have. Questions?
Commissioners, any questions?
No.
No.
Thank you for.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for the event.
Next on the agenda, Director of Building and Life and Safety and Public Works. Let's put it all together, Mr. Stackhouse.
Thank you, Commissioner.
General overall does everything very well.
The, the Lomax Carpet Mark Project, actually, we issued a temporary UNO just so they could start bringing stock in. The building sprinkler system, fire alarm system and, you know, all the life safety devices are up. So they're still working to complete that. Audi is obviously started making some major headway. Finally, they were, they were delayed a good bit. So they're starting their work. Residential projects, the, my place is really actually taking off. I encourage the commissioners to take a drive up there. Final paving actually will start on what they call Phase Five soon. Phase Five is the apartment building side. They have public waters ran now, sewer. And unfortunately, the connection for sewer and public water is what is the work taking place on Route Three Twenty-two starting next week. So but that project, they're starting to look for regular building permits. We had been issuing footing and foundation for a while. Now they'll start getting their building permits. The first group there, I met with him today. They're planning on doing six apartment buildings and ten townhomes initially all at one time. And then they'll come back and do about another twenty townhomes and then the, the other three apartment buildings. So that's kind of how they're going to start phasing it. But that work is, is really moving along. Willow's at Valley Run, which is the five apartment building complex that is just about getting ready to record their land development plan. We did give them a grading permit so they could start putting their ENS controls in. So actually, if you have it road past that section of town, the site is clear, completely clear and has their ENS controls in. So that, that project will start pretty quickly as well. Land Development, obviously, Edges Mill Road, Forty-Sixty Edges Mill Road, you know about. We do have a conditional use hearing scheduled for the last meeting in October. Colonial Hyundai, their land development plan is in review and they'll be on the October Planning Commission Agenda. And then the CCIU Toddler Center, they receive approval from the, or recommendation from the Planning Commission and their review is, is back in review with us at this time. Thirty-nine eighty-two Lincoln Highway, Jeffrey's Family Farm. They finally got a sketch plan submitted. So we'll be reviewing that. And then my guess is they'll take those comments and then probably submit a land development plan. But they're definitely moving along. From an emergency services or emergency management standpoint, we continue to, to do planning. We did an IAP for Community Day. Luckily, we, you know, we didn't need that, but we did that as matter of procedure. Storm Ida work. The electrical work. So the golf course pump house, you know, that's a storm Ida project. It's also an insurance project. So the electric that goes to the pump house runs not just the pump house, but it also runs some of the sprinkler system for the golf course. So that's been a major, you know, concern since we have had some drought conditions. We did get approval from the insurance company to take action. We got three quotes on electrical work. The insurance company approved the lowest bidder on that and that work actually supposed to start next week. So basically, they'll reroute electric from the maintenance barn. They'll tap into the sprinkler system so the sprinkler system will have power. So that work should start Monday. The manager just pulled up some pictures. So today, I did go out and meet. This is the old apartment building on Rousey Drive, or we call it Two Fifty-Eight Horseshoe Drive. And you can see the building's gone. They started working on the foundation, knocking out the foundation today and they anticipate being completed Monday. So that project is, is finally done.
It's there Monday night.
Yeah.
It was. Yeah.
Yeah, they did it pretty quick. It's a pretty good operation, the, the company that got it. So like I said, they anticipate barring the rain that's coming to be calling for an inspection prior to backfill and then they'll finish grading and mat and seed it. And then we'll have a final punch list walkthrough. Along the same lines, East Fisherville Road, that project is completed. Can you bring those up? You don't see it?
Don't look at that stuff. Man, you'd be dreaming about it.
Hey Jane.
You tell them, Jane.
Straighten her right out.
I don't know why, but it's, hold on.
Drag time?
So that, obviously, well, as the commissioners know, you approved the demo of East Fisherville Road Bridge that had been out of service for years and then was significantly damaged more during Storm Ida. They did mobilize about a week and a half ago and they did get that demo done. This view, that view is standing on Osborne Road, looking back towards Bonsville. You'll see the structure's gone. All the stone and what was able to be used as fill was filled in. All the debris on the far side on Bonsville Road, all that was taken out. It was graded, matted and seeded. And then the picture prior to that was the Osborne Road. All the asphalt was removed. Topsoil was brought on, brought in. That was matted and seeded. We still have a punch list on that. There, there is a little bit of an issue in the drainage swell along what used to be the street. And the contractor's going to have to come back and fix that, but that, that job's almost done. So a little bit more progress on a couple of those projects. From a public works perspective, well, the only other thing I have on that, we did, I finally had a second interview for the Fire Marshal position. Chief Taylor attended that second interview and we did give a conditional offer of employment to that person. We have not heard back from them. So, you know, we're hopeful that that may work out. From a public work standpoint, Municipal Drive or Municipal Park, we, the bridge, I don't even know how to describe that bridge, but it's the, the bigger bridge in the middle of the park that used to have a roof on it. The roof had been taken off a few years ago and it's in a little bit of a disrepair. We did work with Abby and we actually are going to remove that whole structure and we're going to put a new bridge there. The bridge will actually be two concrete panels and then there's metal railing that'll go on there. There's already metal supports there. This will be bolted to those metal supports. It'll be just as wide as what's there, but it'll be almost zero maintenance moving forward.
Is that the one next to the pavilion?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. So that, that's, we have the panels, we have the handrails. Now we just need some decent weather to get that project done. So we, obviously, the guys assisted with Community Day, they put a lot of work into that, you know, trying to prep ahead of time and helping Abby. The road program, road program just finished up. We do have some punch list items and we're working through those, but for the most part, that went pretty well. James Buchanan, again, we were doing some minor work there. We replaced a couple of inlets. Continued fall maintenance on Geo Carlson Boulevard, which consisted of mainly cleaning debris out of drainage swales that we did spring work on and weed eating, trying to keep the weeds and stuff down so that the water can continue to flow. We still continue to meet like every other week at least once or at least once a month on stormwater program development and that's moving along. The public works crews got called in three times for trees down obstructing the roadways and removed them. And as far as employees for public works, as you know, we have three positions open. We had made two offers. One gentleman actually just finished his physical and his drug test and he has a start date of October thirteenth. The second gentleman finished his physical, still waiting for his drug test to come back and we're hoping he'll be able to start probably within the next two to three weeks. We did do a third interview just yesterday and that is hopeful. We're just waiting for that gentleman to submit the rest of his paperwork. And finally, chipping and leafback program starts the first week of October.
I had two quick questions.
Sure.
This is one out of curiosity. With fire inspections, commercial
Yes, sir.
fire inspections. Who pays for the commercial fire inspection? The property owner or the renter?
That's a very good question. That depends, that, we, so we contact the owner of the property. And we tell them, listen, you, we need commercial fire inspections. So the strip malls are where that comes into play specifically. So we go and tell the property owner, listen, we need commercial fire inspections of each individual tenant. A lot of times the guys will go pass out the paperwork to the tenant and say, hey, can you fill this out? That's between the tenant and the property owner. Ultimately, the property owner, if the tenant doesn't fill it out and doesn't get, grant us access, then we have to take enforcement action on the owner of the property. So it varies, is the answer. Some property owners tell us, listen, if the tenant doesn't pay for it and fill out the paperwork, send it to us and we'll pay for all. It really depends on what is in our lease contract.
Thank you. The other question is, is Spackman Farm done? Was that done?
Yes, that was part of the.
Don't tell anybody. I thought it was, but I didn't want to say anything.
Yeah, actually, I'm, I'm glad you brought that up because I did have a couple, I did have people ask me about that. And was it going to be opened back up for use since they paved it? And I guess that's a conversation we need to have.
Yeah, there's some conversations going on with the Historical Commission and I, I want to shout out to Abby. I should be at the next Parks and Rec Commission. Trying to pull together ribbon cutting with, because Richard Spackman, who's out west, had reached out to us and he said the family would come in for something like that. So but, you know, we'll see. We'll have to talk about a lot of things. Have to be very small area open and very limited with a lot of security. Nice that it's moving along. Thank you.
And Ray, I, I had one question. Colonial Hyundai, is it?
Yes, sir.
Did I see cars parked behind the US Supply House?
So you did. So that, but that is not associated with Colonial Hyundai.
Oh, okay.
So that property, which includes the old US Supply Building and several acres to the rear, was purchased by the owners of Kia. So they did get a permit, a grade, well, they didn't get a grading permit. They, they did declare the cutting. They are going to clean up the, the existing US Supply Building, which they already have started. They fixed some of that fencing and I do have to have a conversation with him for moving some of the vehicles down and parking them. Really shouldn't be doing that at this particular time.
That's what I thought and I, I apologize for making that mistake about Colonial Honda. That's on the other side of the township.
Yep.
They want to see you in a Kia.
They are intending, they are intending on coming. We did have a meeting with them. They are, will be coming in to do a land development project to the rear of that US Supply. And part of that will have a, you know, a detailer and a auto sales component to it.
Yes, I I recall that, but I was surprised to see, yeah, I I was surprised to see cars already parked there.
Yeah, as was I.
All right, I'm glad you're on top of it.
Yep.
Thank you for everything, Ray.
Sure.
And uh and last but not least, we have uh the Ingleside Golf Manager, Mr. Ward. Chris, how were you this evening?
Good, how are, how's everyone? I'll just go over the August numbers here. Um so this August rounds were four thousand two hundred and forty-six. Compared to last August of three thousand six hundred and seventeen. Um that was good to see, because it was a hot and humid August, and usually heat. Really puts a damper on place, so even with the heat, we were, we had a good month. Um revenue for August was a hundred and thirty, just over a hundred and thirty-three thousand compared to two thousand twenty-one, which was a hundred and six to eighty-one. So just over twenty-six thousand more in August, or up twenty-six percent. Um year to date, we're at six hundred and sixty-nine thousand, almost six hundred and seventy thousand, compared to six hundred and thirty-four from last uh year. So that's about thirty-five thousand plus over from last year, about six percent. Um as mentioned earlier by Commissioner Evans, we are in the positive overall, and that includes the bond payment has been made this year. The loan payment has been made this year. So uh that's all I really have for this, you know, for tonight. We're gonna talk about the equipment, and then Commissioner Mullin talked about um pushing that back until we were able to. Over the budget a little bit for the for the next year.
Right, correct. I I had reached out to Chris earlier and and just asked if we can uh postpone the voting on the uh. The mowers until we go through budget, because budget budget season is just next month.
Right.
Uh which starts, so I'd I'd prefer to go through that. Uh before we approve the uh the mowers for next year.
Thank you for hosting the tour.
Yeah, the tour.
Yeah, Chris, the tour was excellent. We had a great time.
The tour was great.
I'm glad everyone came out, got to see it, got to see the golf course.
Beautiful golf course. Anyone who hasn't seen it, and if you know, if you have friends that golf, uh. Tell them to go check it out. It's great.
Yeah, no, it you have such beautiful views.
Yeah.
From certain holes, it's just amazing. I I I know it needs some work, and I think it gave us a a great perspective on what we need to. To concentrate on.
And as as the tr- as the trees will turn and even gets uh, the views even come better as the leaves start to change. You get to see all those hills around.
All the fall weather's coming.
Yep.
All right, Chris, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, uh before I move to additional business, uh any questions for the directors? From residents? Miss Enni, any hands raised? I didn't see any while we were going through our discussions.
Not at this time.
I have the same question I had before. How are the Phillies gonna turn it around?
Sorry, sir. That's not on the agenda under the new Pennsylvania Act. We can't discuss that.
All right, uh one item under additional business is a proclamation for the Childhood Cancer Awareness Week of October ninth. Through the fifteenth of twenty twenty-two. This was an email uh that we had received, uh and we thought it was very important.
Absolutely.
So I will entertain a motion to approve uh the proclamation.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Evans, second by Commissioner Tindaro. All in favor? Say aye.
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 Motion's good, four zero. Uh Miss Enni, will this be posted on our website?
We can, absolutely.
Should we read it? You want it read into the record quickly?
If you want to read it, yeah.
Whereas the American Cancer Fund for Children and Kids Cancer Connection Report Cancer is the leading cause of death by disease. Among US children between infancy and age fifteen. This tragic disease is detected in more than sixteen thousand of our country's young people each and every year. And whereas one in five of our nation's children loses his or her battle with cancer. Many infants, children and teens will suffer from long-term effects of comprehensive treatment, including secondary cancers. An estimated four hundred thousand children and adolescents are diagnosed with cancer globally each year. And whereas founded nearly thirty years ago by Steven Feierstein. A member of the philanthropic Max Factor Cosmetics Family, the American Cancer Fund for Children, Inc. Kids Cancer Connection, Inc., along with Lions Club International, are dedicated to helping these children and their families. And whereas the American Cancer Fund for Children and Kids Cancer Connection provide a variety of vital. Patient psychosocial services to children undergoing cancer treatment. At Children's Hospital of Philadelphia, Shriners Children's in Philadelphia, New Moore's Children's Hospital Delaware. The Children's Regional Hospital at Cooper and Camden, New Jersey, UPMC Children's Hospital of Pittsburgh. As well as participating hospitals throughout the country, thereby enhancing the quality of life for these children and their families. And whereas the American Cancer Fund for Children and Kids Cancer Connection also sponsor toy distributions. Family sailing programs, pet assisted therapy, positive appearance programs, laughter noon, laughter is healing. Educational programs, KCC Supercar Experience and Hospital Celebrations. In honor of a child's determination and bravery to fight the battle against childhood cancer. Now, therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of Commissioners of Cowan Township, Chester County, Pennsylvania. Proclaim October ninth through fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, Childhood Cancer Awareness Week in Cowan Township.
Very nice.
I have one piece of additional business.
Sure.
Uh a resident came to the meeting tonight. I'll leave the resident anonymous. Um that resident has uh reached out to me and asked that I contact them. I said I would. I didn't. They called the township, the township called me to tell me they were trying to reach me. I got COVID. I said I would call her when I got better. I didn't. I failed the resident three times now. So I just wanna go on record that, like I said, we don't get everything right, but I will call that resident tomorrow. And you and I will take a ride out to see their house.
Progressive discipline, you need to make the motion to adjourn.
Don't we have public comment?
It it was a joke.
And do we have a time?
Public comment?
Time for what?
Well, let's let's make it now. When do you wanna go?
Uh.
Monday?
Uh no, let me see, let me look at the calendar. Hang on one sec.
Take it out. We're gonna hold them to it right now.
Yep, here we go. Uh can we do Tuesday? Tuesday the fourth? Oh, no, Wednesday, Wednesday's perfect. Can you do Wednesday the fifth?
I'm good.
I don't believe the resident's here.
No, the resident is not here.
Oh, okay. All right, we'll do the fifth.
We'll do the fifth in the morning, and I'll reach out to the resident.
Okay.
And then that'll be that.
All right.
Again, my apologies. I I.
Sounds good. So now now we're in public comment.
Yes.
We have public comment at this time.
We we we, yes, yes, our neighbors from Brandywine.
Oh, please.
Do come up.
Yes.
Come on up.
I'm up to the mic.
All right, sorry to make you sit through all of this.
No, it's good. I've never been to one of these before, so I've just been enjoying observing what happens. Um hi.
Hi, and your name?
My name is Parker. Um I run a five oh one C three nonprofit arts organization called One for All. I have for sure.
Yes.
Um we just moved into the sh- I opened up a new location in the shopping center, um in the Acme Shopping Center. I think you helped me with the inspection. Um and so it's our second community arts location. I have two locations in Philadelphia. One is a community arts location and the other is private studio spaces for emerging artists.
Oh, wow.
And um in Philadelphia, at our community arts location, what I do is it the, so our kids' classes. Costs money, but the, I do mural programs with kids, where like kids around like the neighborhoods and the. The different schools, I get local business owners and real estate owners who have like, just like vacant buildings or like. Ugly gross buildings that like need to look pretty, like me and the kids will go and um we'll do murals on the wall. And we'll decorate it and it'll like, it's a free program for the kids. They get to come and have great fun and. We design beautiful murals and the neighborhood um business owners and stuff, they they fund it. And they are able to pay for us to do the mural, which it's not, it doesn't cost that much. But um it's just a great thing. I like to offer free arts programming and arts accessibility to the neighborhood. Um because not everybody can afford, you know, like to pay for, to pay for classes. Um so I thought that you all lovely folks would be the folks to talk to in this community. For maybe myself and my little organization to kind of like wiggle our way in to. Um hopefully do some murals around the town, um but I don't know how to get my way into that. So I wanted to ask for some help or pieces of advice, or if you guys know any buildings that might need. Me and the kids to comfortify it.
Well, if I, I could make a suggestion, we have a community um outreach specialist that works here. Her name's Abby Swan. She's amazing. Um she handles a lot of the community project type things. She may have some connections to hook you up with.
Awesome.
Um if you wanna believe your brochure, I would give it to her.
Yeah, and I have my business card too.
And Parker, I'll also say um I'm a great believer in the arts. Uh I do something on my Facebook page, uh my township Facebook page on Wednesdays called Good News Wednesday.
Mm-hmm.
Uh and I haven't done it in about a month or so, because I haven't been on social media, because I've been too busy. But um I would love to um. Interview you and and put you on there. Could I?
That would be lovely, thank you.
Are you there every day or?
I'm there, um well.
Give me your business card.
Yeah, I'm the founder and director, so I'm kinda bouncing between all three of them.
Right.
But I'm pretty flexible, so.
Thank you.
Enough to share.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for hearing me out and.
Of course, thank you so much.
Thank you for coming.
Right.
Yeah, very nice.
Very nice. That's what we're talking about tonight. Thank you.
That's in the Acme, that's in the Acme Shopping Center?
Yes.
Oh, fair, oh, perfect spot, yeah.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Parker.
Thank you very much.
Next. And just state your name, please.
Evening, I'm Mr. Michael Boggs.
Michael, how are you?
Give his address also, please, Mr. Boggs.
Oh, address?
If we could have your address too, please.
Twenty-seven Johnson Avenue.
Okay.
Lifelong residence in this neighborhood, way back, chief every masterphone and all them way back. But anyway, Mr. Bibby and Hog tied me and brought me down. Have a few, I just have a few questions and concerns about, you know, things that's going on in the neighborhood. I don't know if I had to come down and file something, go through codes or whatever. But um, oh, one thing that the uh, I think the codes mentioned was the CCI Utah project. I did notice some postings out there. And they're having a meeting, I do believe, over in the courthouse. October, something about the coastal area school districts, about unused land and all that out there. It was on the poster. But anyway, they got a posters out there, yellow posters on a stick, out there about the tile was centered, out there by Ruth Dawkins.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, the park. I'm I'm wondering what's gonna happen to that park out there, basketball court and all that.
Well, there's nothing, nothing's gonna happen to Dawkins Park.
Okay.
Yeah, they they had, you know, they had initially discussed about doing a cooperative project with the township for Dawkins Park. But that that is not occurring.
Okay.
Yeah, so the, yeah, Dawkins Park's not being affected.
Okay. Um. I don't know, I got a few questions. How to go about getting some stuff done about, and you know, in the community, people just. I mean, there's one resident out there, he got about seventeen trash cans sitting on the side of the house. I mean, I know the township distributes at least two, recycle any trash.
Yep, did you, did somebody, did you or somebody else just make a complaint recently about that? I believe so.
I don't know.
Okay.
But tomorrow it could be another issue.
I believe, I believe we did literally, I think it's funny, I believe we received one last week. And how we usually handle that specifically about trash cans, we'll usually go out and put a door hanger on the person's door. And let them know what the ordinance says, because you're right, there's a very specific ordinance about when they're allowed to be put on a street corner. And when they have to be moved back to your house. So usually we go put that door hanger on, and if they don't, then we'll issue a notice of violation.
Did file, I did come down.
Amount of.
I did come down, I did come down the other day. And I filled out a paper about a guy on Fox Avenue with the trash cans five feet out in the road.
That's the one I'm probably talking about, okay.
I think it was fourteen and twelve or something like that, the address.
Yep.
I mean, he moved one back, the one's still sitting out there, you know, five feet out in the road, and you try to get around, uh it's a mess.
But we we are addressing, that's the one we're addressing. I knew we had one in here.
But this guy, this guy got trash cans on the side of his house. I mean, he got all different colors, like a rainbow, you know. Yeah.
Yeah, if you, if you give me the addresses, we'll definitely investigate them.
That makes that easy.
Don't hold back, don't.
Then in the email to Scott as we speak.
Another thing, these cars, these abandoned cars, I mean, with no tags on them, they've been in the yards for fifteen, sixteen years, stuff like that.
So the ones that we, the ones we can't see, so I could print out a list, and trust me, we've, we've addressed a lot of them. And what I have to say about that is you you have to remember, so we issue a notice of violation if they don't do it in a timeframe, we issue a citation. That doesn't always resolve it, because what will happen is people will pay the citation and still not resolve the issue. Um typically, what we do is if that occurs, then we continue to issue the citations. So I guess what I'm saying is some of them may be in that process, and if they're not, we just, we need somebody to come tell us. And sometimes we have to get permission to go in neighbors' yards to be able to see them, because we can't just walk on somebody's property.
Sir, are those on the street or in a yard?
Or in the yard. I mean, this vehicle been there for at least fifteen, sixteen years, no tags on it. I know they ain't got no insurance in respect, I mean, you know.
If.
All that.
If I, if I could ask you, if I could ask you to do one of two things, either you can email us those addresses. Or if you stop in, you can again, fill the same thing out and just give us the addresses and then we'll, we'll issue that.
No, I do that, I'll stop in, I ain't got no problem.
If you don't mind.
Will do. You want me to stop in and fill out the paper or?
You could tell me after.
If you can tell her, the manager will play my secretary and she will send me an email right now.
Two Toth Avenue?
One second. Let me make Ray a to-do list.
That's the boss back, yeah. I'm a newcomer, I'm Mr. Newcomer, Mr. Newcomer.
But it was forty-two Toth for the garbage cans, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
And you gotta, and you gotta rid. You gotta rid SUV sitting in that yard for at least fifteen, sixteen years. I mean, that's that's a fifty-two Toth Avenue.
Is it on the grass or or is it?
Back in between the houses, like you can see, you right there, you can see it right there. No tags on it, they've been sitting there years.
Can you see it from from the street?
Yep.
Okay.
And you said another one by you, placed forty. Forty-five Johnson Avenue. That's a red Mr. Bishi. I think it's a red Mr. Bishi, yeah. And another thing, um. The resident down there, they got, they had a swimming pool, them big rubber swimming pools, about that high, sitting in the front yard. I mean, it had water in it, I mean, it's still sitting there.
Well, so.
Sixteen Johnson.
So we can look at it, if the water's dirty and stagnant, then we can resolve that issue.
I mean, they gotta have pools in the yard like.
Yeah, if it's, yeah, if it's below forty-two inches, they can, they can have that, that's not regulated by the code. If it's over forty-two inches, there's regulations about it.
Yeah, I was concerned about that with the kids running.
Yeah, that's why I said, if it's, if it's less than that water depth, there's no regulation. If it's deeper than forty-two inches high. Then there's, there's regulation.
Ordinance on that grass growing like wheat.
Well, and they they probably have a violation, but I, again, if you give us the address, I'll have to look.
All right. They're my concerns.
We appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
You made it very easy for us.
Like you said, I'm a newcomer, but I shall return.
That's, we welcome you to come back.
Sir, if I,
Love your information.
If I can offer recommendation, tell me, tell me sooner.
Okay.
Yeah. We'll take care of it.
Thank you, Michael.
For welcome anytime.
Vivian!
Hey!
Hey, how are you?
Hi, I'm Vivian Greaves and I am a resident of Brandywine Homes. And this is to you, Chief.
Ms. Viv, can we just have your address, dear?
Forty-three, forty-three Johnson Avenue.
Not that everybody doesn't know, but for, for some people that thought, no, where Ms. Viv lives.
Yes. Chief, uh, I'd like to know when somebody bring, uh, food carts from the stores and park them in front of their house, isn't that fevery? And they're sitting there and you can see them when you come into Brandywine from Route thirty on the left-hand side. I don't know that address. But on the left-hand side, that row of houses have food carts sitting on the properties. The grass is really up high. They're parking their cars on the sidewalk into the yard. Now, is that a violation or what? Yes. And they keep them. Okay. I, I don't know that address. It's just as you come in off of Route thirty, first row of houses on the left-hand side. And the grass is up high. And you know, that, that, yes. And parking on the sidewalk, is that a violation? Parking on the sidewalk and the car's sitting on the sidewalk and in the yard.
On the street, so it's, it's not on the street and sidewalk, sidewalk and yard?
Yeah, and if people can't walk on the sidewalk.
Goes to your esteemed, goes to your esteemed colleague next to you, Chief.
I was just gonna say, if we were gonna work on that cooperatively, we'd have to figure out.
Well, you know, they're, they're, the people that are doing it are renters. Okay? And, uh, it, Brandywine is starting to look trashy. It used to look really nice, but, uh, of late, there's lots of trucks parked on the street. You can't get through. And there's one sitting, it's right near the stop sign on Toth Avenue. It's had a flat tire since November and it's been sitting there and not moved. And they tell me it's a guy, I don't know his address either, but he works on cars across the street from me. And I thought working on cars in yards was a violation down there. It used to be a violation. You're not supposed to be doing that type of work in a residential area. Well, they're doing major work when they take an engine out of a car, don't you think? Yeah, well, they have.
Why don't we do this, Ms. Viv? You home tomorrow, sweetheart? You home tomorrow, baby girl? You home tomorrow? Are you home?
Uh, yeah. I'll be there.
Me and the chief will take. Oh.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Our speed limit. The cars fly through there and, uh, run right through the stop signs. I, I've mentioned this before. And nothing's been done. You guys can make some money. I mean, all you gotta do is sit on Clary Street. I mean, the cars just sail right through the there on Toth Avenue.
Well, since the chief just let me know he's gonna be off tomorrow.
And now, look, he can stand in my front yard and just watch. Wait a minute, Monday. Okay, I'm trying to think, Monday. But, okay, well, Monday's fine, uh, but I, I mean, Brandywine is looking horrible. I mean, the grass is growing up. What's going on at the center? The, the, the empty building that's on Fox, Ray?
What's going on?
Yeah. Oh, well, yeah, because they wanted to build sixteen apartments there, right?
Oh, they, I think they came to, to what?
They squashed that. We said twelve, eight or twelve, I think.
I think it was still what they brought back.
I think it went down to eight and they never came back, right?
No, they, they came back and what they came back with is
Okay. Now, can you tow that car that's on Toth Avenue with the flat tires? And I'm sure there's no tags on it. Well, it's been sitting there since November. And, uh, there's a truck pulled right up close to it. So you can't see the tags.
Right.
So, I, I've been noticing it since November and I don't know why it, it's just still sitting there. Right there at the end of Toth Avenue near the stop sign. And then there's a car that's been sitting nine years next door to me. Forty-five, uh, Johnson Avenue. It's been sitting there nine years.
In the yard though, not in the street.
Oh, it's not, well, you, it's not on the street, no, it's right in the driveway. Okay. Now, I heard something that you may be putting a, um, different speed limit in Brandywine? Like fifteen miles per hour? I heard that. It was approved? When you're gonna put them in? And then you definitely need, uh, it should be on Fox. When they come off of Cowen Road, they speed through there and, uh, Toth Avenue is a freeway. Yes. You're right. You put it on Toth. You put it on Toth and Fox. It was never one on Johnson.
Oh, on Johnson?
Now, oh, on, um, Johnson Avenue. I knew if it was my rental, there's a window that's out and boarded up on, on Johnson Avenue and, uh, it's been like for over a month. Sixteen Johnson Avenue. You know who they belong to. Yeah, yeah. Okay, I think that's it. I think. But if it is, I'll call you.
Thank you for how to find us.
Poor Joe, you got somebody to help.
Thank you so much for hanging out all night.
Ms. Vivian, thank you.
Talk to us. Appreciate it. So moved.
Any other public comment? Uh, I know we have some residents still online. Thanks for hanging.
None in the Zoom world.
All right, and then we'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
You got mine already.
Okay, so moved.
So moved.
Take it all in favor? Say aye. Aye.
All right, good night everyone.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Great night, everyone.
Have a great night.